Supervisor McClure, would you like to join us, please? Seeing it is after the town clock hour by that clock up there, I would like to call the meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order and ask our administrative officer to lead us in the pledge.
Oh, it does.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jane. And now we will have nomination and election of Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Chair, I'd like to nominate Supervisor Sullivan for Chair.
Thank you.
Do you require a second? No, second.
Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none. That will, I will close the, uh... Yeah. The nominations for Chair. Jeremy, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Where's your mom?
What's that?
Where's your mom?
She's out of town.
Oh.
I would just like to say that it has been a pleasure and honor to serve as Chair this past year and appreciated every bit of help I've had from our Clerk of the Board, Jeremy.
Well, I'd like to extend appreciation to Chair McNamara. Thanks for keeping us on track last year. Leslie, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I go along with that also.
Yeah, and there is a lot of extra time on the Chair position and we definitely appreciate the time.
And I hope, I hope you have the time.
Oh, I will. I will. Okay, at this point, continuing nominations. Open the nominations for Vice Chair.
Nominate Supervisor McNamara.
Any other nominations?
You saw me looking at you thinking, "Will David decline if I nominate him?"
Seeing no other nominations, I'll close the nominations and Jeremy, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Congratulations.
Yes.
All right. Okay, so at this point, we're going to move on in the agenda and any introduction of new employees to the Board of Supervisors. Seeing none, we'll go on to reporting the actions from closed session of the County Council.
Nothing to report.
Okay. And at this point, I'll request any deletions, corrections, or additions from Board members to the agenda at this time. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come up to the attention of the county subsequent to posting the agenda and the matter requires action for the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Any changes? Okay. So, we're going to go on to receive other brief reports or announcements relative to the County of Del Norte programs and projects and specifically to the different Board members. So, we'll go ahead and start with Supervisor Finnegan.
Thank you, Chair Sullivan. It's been a while since we met, but I will try to keep this a little brief. First, had a meeting with the California State Association of Counties Executive Board Retreat, the Officers Retreat, planning our agenda for the coming year, looking at some of the issues that the County is going to be dealing with, looked at some of the appointments, the appointment of a Treasurer, and how we're going to conduct business and approve the calendar for the coming year. Had a first five meeting, and a very significant one, where we refinanced, executed all the documents, or approved the execution of the documents. I think Commissioner Blatnick, Chair Blatnick, signed them, to where the first five has now refinanced the Family Resource Center over blended financing, 30- and 40-year financing. We have an interest rate close to 4% on a blended rate, so it is fully amortized. So, there is a level of security where that billing will be there, will be financed, will be paid for, that we've never had to worry about. The big thank you probably should come from the County because we've been paying, first five has been paying the County 5% interest only per annum, and that has been the best yield that the County has received on any investment for the past probably four or five years. But it was a pleasure, I guess that's the right word, the first five was very happy that we could have helped the County and happy that the County assisted us in carrying things to where we could get a good interest rate in the long run.
So, you want us to thank you because you paid off the loan?
Well, see, that's the oxymoron.
Why don't you guys keep paying that 5%?
Absolutely. So, anyway, it's a good thing for first five, it's a good thing for the Family Resource Center, and it allows us to get back to programming and not worrying about financing. Had an airport design meeting at the airport where we looked at the terminal, some architect drawings, there will be some additional ones, looking at the road coming in, looking at the configuration out there. So, we are well on our way. Just for those that haven't been staying tuned, all the permits are in place, I mean, all the approvals are there, so we're moving forward. Most of the money, some of it is there, and then we'll be looking at where to get the rest of it. Had a meeting with the Governor, went to Sacramento beginning of last week, and first we met with the Governor regarding the initiatives that are out there. He has a proposed initiative that is still waiting title and summary, and CSAC, State Association had an initiative which already had title and summary, and we were actually ready to go out to get signatures. Polling showed that it would have been successful. The CSAC proposal dealt only with constitutional amendments, that any state programs that were passed to the Counties through realignment, and specifically AB 109, the Sheriff's Probation Issues, Parole Issues, that was most specific to it, but also some of the social services and mental health that's coming down the pike as well. So, what we saw, that going back to last March when you had SB X, 1 triple X, I think, SCA, whatever it was, it did not get two votes that allowed for the constitutional protections to be guaranteed by the legislature. So, we had to start the initiative process. CSAC filed because the Governor didn't. Well, the Governor subsequently did. The difference between the two initiatives is the Governor's proposal, as you probably have read, also has those same constitutional guarantees, that the money will be there if the program comes down, that there will be no unfunded mandates, but his also have what you call revenue enhancements. It helps repay for some of those services, it helps to backfill education, and it, of course, will have, and they are temporary, the tax increases, but, and they're less than what would have happened if they had been tax extensions. However, I'm, well, you'll hear more about that in the future, we'll let the Governor make his play there. The significant meeting was between the Sheriff's Association, the Police Officers Association, and the Probation Officers Association, and the State Association with the Governor to have, give the Governor the opportunity to try to convince us that his initiative was the best way to go, and that the State Association that was backed by the Sheriff's and Probation should be withdrawn, that he had the same type of guarantees for us, except his also had the revenues. The opposition targeted, probably would come from schools, because they felt that our initiative did not guarantee that those Prop 98 funds were going to go to school, it would actually diminish them. So, it basically helped in that area that he was targeting sending money to schools so they wouldn't be part of the opposition. Anyway, it was a nice hour and a half meeting. After that, we had a dinner of the CSAC officers, and at that dinner, Ana Montesantos, the Director of Finance for the Governor, stopped by, had a glass of water with us for about an hour and some hors d'oeuvres while we were eating. Then she left, and Nancy McFadden, who's the Governor's Chief of Staff, just happened to come by. She sat there and talked to us for about an hour, and then her phone rings and the Governor, we had invited him, but he had another commitment, well, he comes by, and he sits there for probably an hour and a half drinking coffee and having dessert with us, and talking about his initiative, talking about how already behind the scenes, the Sheriff's Probation and the Counties and the Governor are working to tweak all those issues in AB 109, like the length of consecutive sentencing. So, you, we should not be having people more than three years in county jail, we certainly shouldn't be having somebody that gets seven consecutive three-year terms for 21 years in county jail like in Sacramento County. So, these things are, he's demonstrated that he is actually listening and working on them and tweaking, and there's a great relationship there. And again, his purpose was to try to get to us to withdraw our initiatives, so to clear the field, so his would be more successful. But that conversation turned into, he talked about first five. He talked about education, he talked about charter schools, he talked about empowering charter schools and empowering local school boards and the standardization he doesn't necessarily approve of, and best practices, he says he doesn't approve of. How do you have one best practice? You know, because that does away with the idea that one size, or that, I guess enhances the idea that one size fits all and one size doesn't fit all, there's not just one best practice. So, it was a good philosophical discussion, it was a good substantive discussion, and his commitment to Counties was there. On a personal note, when I see the Governor as an Officer of CSAC, he doesn't say, "Hi, Dave," or "Hi Supervisor," he goes, "Del Norte." And that's, that's the objective, that's what we're after. So, every time he sees me, he thinks Del Norte. So, the next time that we need a million dollars down at the harbor, he's not going to be thinking of the Republican that didn't vote for his budget, he's going to be thinking about the guy from Del Norte that he's getting along with and that's a reason to support. And so, that's the good news. The next day, we had a CSAC Board of Directors meeting where we took up whether to go out with our initiative and go for signatures, to expend the money, which could have been up to a $10 million campaign, it was at least going to cost $3 million. The polling showed it was good, the Governor's polling shows good too. The Governor showed up and talked for about an hour and answered questions and asked us to please pull our initiative and support his. We did take action to suspend our initiative, to put it in the closet, to not go forward with it. We stopped short of supporting the Governor's because he has not yet had title and summary. So, we want to see what the LAO has to say, what the fiscal impacts are, and what the final product is. So, what will happen is at the next CSAC meeting, I think you're going to see us endorse the Governor's initiative, but we at least told him, "Okay, we're going to clear the field for you and we're going to pull ours back." The reason I think we're going to support it is the Governor's is the only one out there with constitutional guarantees for Counties, and that is the main priority and the objective for us as Counties. Moving on, we had, I came home and we had an Airport JPA meeting. We had a nice ceremony at Smith River Rancheria, it was attended by Assemblyman Chesbro. The reason it was is Assemblyman Chesbro is the one that carried the bill through two Governors for two years to allow for the Smith River Rancheria to join the Airport JPA. So, that was a signing ceremony, you probably saw in the newspaper, there's some nice pictures there. It was a third amended one, and it really completes the mold of the Governments and the economic drivers of the area. I told the story, and I think we all remember, as Boards of Supervisors, we went up to the Smith River Rancheria and had a party there when we formed the Economic Development Zone, where we invited Curry County and Brookings and Crescent City and the Rancherias, and we strung the tape across, the crime scene tape across the highway, and the CHPs calmed the traffic, and we ceremoniously cut that ribbon to show that there is no, there's no border that should take place when you're dealing with economics or the economic viability of a community or an area. So, it came full circle. So, now this, the Airport JPA, the Joint Powers Authority, the Governing Board of the Border Coast Airport Authority is Curry County, Brookings, Smith River Rancheria, Del Norte County, Elk Valley Rancheria, and the City of Crescent City. They said it couldn't be done, and as Assemblyman Chesbro said, "We are the shining example of how partnerships are formed and you come together to enhance the economy and work together for a community." Good job to all. Other than that, a couple of personal notes, went to the Monday night football game with the Steelers, which was great. Cooked for my kids on Christmas, had a bunch of them and grandkids over, and hope everybody is going to enjoy a very successful New Year.
Thanks. Supervisor McClure?
Yes, I spent my last two weeks primarily with family and hanging out with my children that they were home. I've also been spending some time with the Congressional Candidates, talking with them about what I believe are our needs in Del Norte County. There will be three of them in the County, two on Friday night and one on Saturday. It's in the paper today, it's, I don't know if I have the Times right, but at 6 o'clock, I think, it's Susan Adams, and at 7 o'clock, it's Lawson, and then at 3 o'clock on Saturday, it's Jared Huffman. So, it's important for us, I think, as a community to try to get to know them. I also have spent some time on the phone with Solomon and just trying to impress upon them what our needs are as a County and what kind of representation we would like to have in Washington DC, because it's not as much connecting with a candidate as it is assisting that candidate in understanding our paradigm in our community, of what we need as a community. So, I've spent some time doing that. I have also spent a little bit of time reading about the realignment and major concern with the number of prisoners that are being released that have, they're estimating that 60% of them that are released have a drug or alcohol addiction, so the drug and alcohol counseling at the county level is going to have to ramp up. And then, about 30% of them are, have a documented mental illness, that many of them are being released without records. And so, we need to make sure that we're really on top of that kind of service, because it could, it could really drain the coffers of our services if we don't have a real good plan. And then the other is that today, the State Supreme Court will take up the Senate redistricting, and we will have an idea of where we stand as a County, and I think that's extremely important. And other than that, I had a glorious Christmas and a Happy New Year and family all around, and it's great. Thank you.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks.
As we all did, we attended the Del Norte Solid Waste Management Authority, which we were all, which happened after our last Board meeting, I attended that. That's starting to come around to where hopefully we can get some things done, although with the loss of Councilman Slert, that's going to leave the city one short, so hopefully they'll get that vacancy filled. I had some constituents asking me about the, how the tax sale auctions work, they were having some difficulty finding out how to get involved, and evidently that's all done online now. I'm still not sure exactly how it works, but maybe we can make sure there's some instruction on our website or something that can help people through that. I did talk to CAO Serena, and he was very helpful, and hopefully we can get some of that taken care of. I had an RCND meeting, there's, an RCD meeting, excuse me, not RCND, but RCD meeting in Smith River. Most of that conversation was, at that meeting was dealing with the ag ditches, that fishing game has kind of stepped in and don't exactly know where they're at, but having some issues with possible fish-bearing streams and ag ditches, maybe not being defined exactly properly, so we're working on that. Hopefully, we can get that resolved. We also had a meeting, I had a meeting with some, some of the ranchers and the farmers that are out there with some huge concerns on the permitting process and setbacks and all those other kind of things that go along with having to deal with a fish-bearing stream when these ag ditches have been around for 100-plus years. It's pretty difficult to deal with new interpretations, I guess. I guess that's the problem. Also met with CAO and Zach Larson on the Northwest Interregional Water Management Plan survey that was asked for by Kathy Gladhill, who was part of that operation, so we spent about an hour answering questions. We haven't been a big part of that process, we seem to be left out. I've pretty much been non-existent at the meetings because we're, when I do go to the meetings, I'm always asked to approve other people's plans. We don't, nothing comes out of Del Norte County, so I feel it's kind of silly for me to be there and say, "Yeah, well, let's give $2 million to Mendocino County and $6 million to Siskiyou County, and, you know, these, this money's going every place but Del Norte County." So, I don't really feel the significance of me being there, although we did, we did put that out there that that's, that's one of the problems that we've got. So, I am going to go to this next meeting that's next week and see if we can't resolve some of those issues, that we can't get some information in Del Norte County to help provide us a way to see some of those dollars be used in Del Norte County. I did get my, we are now on Google email, so I got all hooked up with my Google email now, so hopefully that's all going to be good. As David said, Smith River Rancheria hosted the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting, went very well, a lot of dignitaries there, it was a great event, and I was glad to be part of that. Had Christmas with family and had a Happy New Years and wish all of you the same, and that's about it for me.
Thank you. Supervisor McNamara?
Again, it's like everyone else, spent lots of days with family and friends for the holidays, had a quiet evening, New Year's Eve, stayed home and safe. I had an agenda review this week, or last week, for this meeting. I also participated in the signing of the JPA for the Airport Authority. That was a nice event. Their event center is so nice since they get all their upgrading, remodeling, everything. I had CMSP, it was my last meeting, I've been on that board for three years, and one thing that is nice, so many times we sit on different committees and boards, and you work on things and then you're gone before they ever come to fruition, and I'm happy to say that one of the, the biggies that we worked on while I was on that committee was the Low Income Health Program, Path to Health. Sometimes we kind of look at what we do as not real significant, but when I really got to thinking about it, I thought, looking at even the logo for that, I got to be a part of that. We got to choose that logo, we got to see the different renditions of what it would look like, and we had three different names for the program to choose from, we got to do that, so it's kind of nice. And it's done just about the same time my, my term there ended, although I'll have to say, I will not miss traveling to Sacramento once a month. David, I don't know how you do it. Well, you're younger than I am. And seeing Ken, our Ag Commissioner here in the chambers, I want to remind everyone, get out and buy your dog license. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor McNamara. Well, it's, it's been a long time since we had our meeting last, so first of all, I want to thank the Board for their vote and support as Chair and the Board serving as Chair this upcoming year, and we'll have some things coming up on the agenda, but a lot of the goals are, are the same as to what the Boards had for the last five years. Attended the first solid waste meeting with both Boards on it, and as Supervisor Hemmingson said, unfortunately, we're losing one, the City Councilman, Councilman Slert, for various reasons, but I know the City will need to get somebody put in that spot there pretty soon. Attended the Chamber Board meeting, Mary Foote was elected as the new President, and so far she seems to be on top of it, gotten a ton of emails from her, so I, you know, having served in that position, I know that it can take a lot of time. Attended the special meeting of CSAC along with Supervisor Finnegan, and I, Dave kind of touches on it, but the reality is, we have our first actual ongoing contact with the Governor, you know, with the Supervisor, where there's a regular conversation every month, and I appreciate the work Supervisor Finnegan's done on that. He does know where Del Norte County is, because I did run into him at a restaurant probably about two or three months ago, and him and his wife were there, and I said, "Well, you've been to Del Norte County," and this is before they'd gotten a role, and yeah, he, he kind of remembered Big Flat, that's where he had his honeymoon, but he obviously knows where Del Norte is now at this point, so it's been a real positive connection on that. In the special meeting, a couple of things, not to regurgitate what, what Davis said or reiterated, but one of the things as to why CSAC on, on some of the Supervisors came down, chose to suspend our initiative and, and didn't fully go out and support the Governors because some of the issues in there, one, as Supervisor Finnegan mentioned, we want to see the details of what his initiative is, his title and summary hasn't come out, but two, there is an, there is an ask for a tax increase, and that's a, that's a tough one. It's an increase in sales tax and one other VLF, I believe it is. So, we're going to have to see what happens, if we can continue. The great thing that is encouraging is the Governor's actually coming and having conversations, and I can tell you, under Governor Schwarzenegger, that didn't, he didn't come to the General Board meeting except to do this big speech, there was an actual conversation and dialogue going on with the Governor. So, I think that's really encouraging from a County perspective, that that dialogue can continue to happen, so we don't want to necessarily lose that. Now, something that happened later that day, because after the, the CSAC meeting, I went over to the Capitol, and apparently one of the Governor's staffers pre-released his budget, you know, a week and a half in advance of when he was supposed to. So, there were a lot of press conferences going on, and I think some backpedaling and stuff, but I don't think they were quite ready to release that and start the, the ongoing dialogue from that point, but that came out, interesting enough, early, early, or later, earlier that day during our CSAC meeting. I had a meeting with Senator Lamalfa and met Senator Corbett, who'd been up here for the tsunami. Senator Corbett's a Democrat, and it was, she asked about Del Norte and how the harbor was doing. So, one of those things about getting more elected officials up here, State Representatives, to see where we're at and what we're going through is very helpful. She'd had a harbor in her community where she grew up and had a similar problem with Army Corps of Engineer and other problems in terms of getting dredged, so it's good to have somebody, you know, on both sides of the aisle aware and, and looking out for Del Norte County. Also got a chance to meet with Assemblyman Jim Nielsen, who has been in state politics and Congress before that for, for several years, and he, he's another one that offered his help to Del Norte, so really a good meeting with him. Want to congratulate Smith River Rancheria, I unfortunately, I apologize, I wasn't able to make the signing, but this is something we've been shooting for, is that Border Coast Economic Zone, of having the Oregon folks involved in making it a regional airport, getting the tribal involvement is essential. Getting the tribal involvement is essential. Not only do we get all these different representations, but we also, you know, you can possibly tap in for other funding sources to continue to expand that airport. So I know Smith River, I've had a lot of conversation with them. That airport is really important to them as well and I'm glad to have them on board. Spent a lot of time with the family over the holidays for Christmas and New Years. The, also had a meeting with the, one of the congressional candidates, Susan Adams. She, we've had a couple of different conversations and I'm glad to see she's going to be coming up here. I, other than that, we're, oh, I did have a conversation with a couple of the bulb growers about the new water quality boards requirement for irrigation ditch discharge plans. And I'm going to, like, talk to Ken later on about that because I, I do have an individual I think would be very helpful and knowledgeable on that, in that group meeting with them. And other than that, that ends my report. So at this point, we'll go on to, seeing we're past the 10, 20 hour for comment, public comment period. Members of the public may address the Board on Matters, which are within the jurisdiction of the Board. If you're addressing the Board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the Board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. So we'll go ahead and open public comment. Wow, okay. We'll close public comment. So at this point, we'll go on to the consent agenda. And I'm going to ask Vice Chair McNamara to, I've got a conflict on two of these if you want to run, go ahead and do the vote on that.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on any items on the consent agenda? Seeing none.
If I could make a comment on number seven, I just would like to extend the appreciation for the, working on the pass-through grant funding for the Hunter Valley Community Services District, the backup generators for their pumps for their water system. And much appreciated, anytime we can funnel some money, some grant funding down to the Klamath area, your, my constituency, your constituency appreciates it very, very much.
Okay. With that, Jeremy, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on item number four.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on items seven and 10.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so at this point, we'll go on to budget transfers.
Move to approve budget transfers 1209 and 1, 1, which is numbers 22 and 23, oh, actually, and 1-2 and 1-3 and 1-4, which on the agenda would be items 22 through 26.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Any public comment? Okay. Jeremy, could you please pull the call?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McNamara?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, moving on to legislative and budget issues. Consider miscellaneous legislative budget matters pertinent to the county of Delmar. authorize the chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending by the state or federal governments.
I quickly mentioned it, a lot of the items that were on the consent agenda are related to the pass-through money that Supervisor, and again, it's a lot of work, a lot of, a lot of work through the Office of Emergency Services. And Cindy would normally be here to answer any of those questions, but she's at a meeting right now that deals with a lot of the OES issues. But there's a lot of work going on and if anybody has individual questions about these, we have propious amounts of information on each one of those. But suffice to say, OES is continuing the good work. On the legislative and budget issues legislatively, Supervisor Finnegan and Chair Sullivan touched on the initiatives where we continue to watch that process. And I speak to David whenever I can and that and Mike. And obviously, budgetary impacts associated with how this goes forward, at this point, it's going to be a significant focus for us during our budget process, which starts here in April. And I'll touch on that here in a minute. We also were, have been looking in the differences and changes in ongoing process of AB 109. It's obviously going to have some impact on the county as of right now. Financially, it looks like it's covered for this year and we'll just see how it's going to work out for next year if we get into the budget process. AB 890, which is a sequa streamlining legislation, we may be coming back before the Board asking for a letter of support. It deals with what they tout as a common sense approach to the dealing of road improvements within existing right-of-ways and easements. And for both public and private projects, it would essentially, as, as written, allow for an expedited process. And as they ask for these letters, we'll, we'll bring them for the Board for consideration. Budget-wise, as we met yesterday with the department heads, we are beginning our mid-year process. The auditor control, we'll open up the program here shortly and mid-year analysis will occur. We know of a couple of issues that have come up and we've discussed regarding agreements that will cost the general fund or agreements that were backed out of by partners. And we'll continue to work on trying to receive that funding, but at this point, it looks like it's a loss. The process of the mid-year is to, basically to determine where we're at for most of our budgets, determine whether or not there's anything significant that needs to be addressed at mid-year. We don't anticipate anything significant at this point, but we won't know until we get to evaluate those. So that'll happen in the next 30 days. Anything significant, we'll come back to the Board of Supervisors. We will have individual meetings with departments if it looks like there's some things that need to be addressed. As for the budget process, once this is over, we will begin in April again with our individual meetings with our individual departments for requested budgets and begin that process, which will probably October again, depending on how state process ends or continues. As of right now, it looks, you know, a lot of the trigger cuts don't have significant effects to the Delmar County general fund, how they will affect Health and Human Services. Director Blatnick is currently going through that evaluation. And we hope that it's not significant. It does look like there are some things in there that would actually be savings, but those also then have corresponding issues that we have to address. If somebody's cut, we have to look at that, how that affects that service and how we continue that service. So at this point, that's the high points.
Any other legislative matters besides, I guess, the governor's initiative?
Well, and then tied to that is the governor's budget, which is still a matter of flux. He proposed it, as you said, it contains, it, and he had this discussion with us the night before, and even before he knew it was going to be released prematurely, that it was not intended to have hits to counties. Counties are going to be the partners going through here, even in the second phase of realignment where he'll take back IHSS. But the, what the budget does have is the combination and elimination of several agencies. And it also deals with CAL FIRE. CAL FIRE now has tweaked the regulations to take out public buildings, to exempt them from that fee. So there will be the comment period now before they go forward again. In the governor's budget, however, it looks at cutting CAL FIRE again. So we're going to obviously make the plea that those cuts not take place in rural areas or, and it's going to end up being appealed, I'm sure, sue the Jarvis people, tax people are going to sue, that how do you charge, it's tax versus fee. How do you charge for something that is already being provided and now you're going to even staff it less, so you're not going to even have the opportunity to do what you say you're charging for? So it's going to be quite a quandary, but stay tuned on that stuff. And along the lines of the governor's budget, he also, this partnership with counties, wants to talk to us about economic development. Never heard a governor really be serious about something like that. Now, maybe it's because that's his twist to where he's pulling the money away from redevelopment agencies and not leaving cities in charge, which actually has hurt counties. So he's asking counties, okay, if you had to design that process for economic development that's beneficial to the economies of your communities, how would you do it? And that's an exciting position to be in, so.
And bringing up the RDAs, I met yesterday with the city manager and he's forwarded a considerable amount of information regarding RDAs. We'll be continuing in those meetings to see how they will impact the city and how that affects the county also. Any new programs that are discussed through the governor's office. So hopefully, we'll be working as a partner on that to figure out what issues they have for overall for Delmar County for positives.
Any, any, any other legislative matters or? Something that, and I, I don't know if CDD has brought this, this up, but, and it's, this is obviously an issue that's been before I got on the board or Supervisor Hemmingson got on the board, but this issue with this constant ebb and flow with Lake Earl. I mean, there's got to be a better solution than what's there right now. And I know it doesn't come up till 15, but maybe it'd be worth a conversation to start the process without opening a huge can of worms to the process. So Capitol Projects, verbal update.
The Klamath Townsite Bow Ramp is now complete. The Road Department completed the striping, I think last week, this week. And all of the dirt that was of concern to the agencies has been moved to a location in the Klamath land that was permitted through CDD and various other reviews. All of the vegetation is now complete. So the next step will be to have a ribbon cutting at some point. I did run into a couple of people from the Klamath area and they've congratulated the Board and the county for another very good project. It is really, it's very impressive to see at this point. I'm hoping, and really hoping, that this one lasts a little longer than the last one because it is a better design. It does have some more modern approach to the design and it should be quite an asset to the Lower River. Gives another access point for public safety, tribal fisheries, recreational fisheries, anybody that wants to use that lower part of the river. So it's, it's, it's pretty impressive.
Have there been some docks put in like there were on the Roy Rook?
No, there has not. And I did speak with Mark Warner and the American Fishing Foundation, which while still an active agent, agency or partner, I should say, is having some obvious economic issues at this time. You know, they're, they generate their funding through the tournaments and donations and people are just not able to give as much. We will look into the same process that got the docks for Roy Rook, but at this point, we may not have a partner to actually put them in, take them out. And we may be talking with others in order to facilitate that if Mr. Warner is no longer in Klamath for a period of time, which it's, it's possible. We're going to have to come up with some alternatives and I've already spoken with him to get that in motion. It's, it's a pretty easy process putting those docks in at Roy Rook. It's just coordinating it and we'll figure that one out. And then obviously, that's what sets apart Roy Rook from, from other launches, is that dock facility. So that, that's a good project. And the Wildlife Conservation Board, I would suspect if at all possible, would fund another one. They, they were very happy with how that ended up. We'll be looking into that, but I did talk to Mark last week and he's back in town now. We'll see what's available. There may be other partners. It's always a possibility also. The Board of Supervisors on the consent agenda passed a contract for the Battery Point Lighthouse Project. Ricktrick &amp; Jones is the contractor. They have a history of doing very good projects with Delmar County, being very easy to work with and very accommodating. So they don't see there being any real issues other than maybe the tides and weather and things that come up with being on an island. But Marshall, I think, is ready to go on that and we will meet with them to get a preliminary schedule together and they'll be meeting with the lighthouse keepers and the Historical Society. And a lot of work done on that one and funding that Supervisor McClure went after that was received. And we do expect that there will be some project changes as we get into it. Typically, when you get into an older structure, and this one happens to be 150 years old, so it would be considered older, there will be some project changes. But when this is all done, you'll see many of the concerns that everybody's had now for, for a lot of years corrected and that facility hopefully will be standing in 150 years. Some of our younger people, maybe they'll be here to, to see it.
Good job.
I have one other thing on this one, Chairman, is Prop 40. We are waiting for a response letter from State Parks and Recreation. They accepted the, the improvements, but they, they are asking us to sign a new contract, which is more restrictive than the one that we started the project under. So we're waiting for a letter. We're another step forward to getting that final reimbursement. So once we get that, we'll react to it.
What's the amount of the final reimbursement?
Excuse me?
How, what's the amount?
Little over $500,000. It's a significant amount of money and for cash flow, we need that money in our coffers. And County Council sent a letter that we partnered on to convince them that we had completed it and the new inspector said, I'm all, I'm okay with it. I don't even have to come see it based on the description he gave. So I think we're in good shape on that. Now we have to do the contract issue and we'll look on that as they get, make their response.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. Okay, at this point, actually, I think we have a couple of things on a closed session we did touch on.
I do have one thing that will take a few minutes.
Okay.
There should be no report.
So we'll go ahead and adjourn the regular meeting and go into closed session at this point.